Your heavenly gracious father, we thank you for all your blessings and the guidance that you've given us. We pray, Lord, that you be and protect our police and fire crews as they protect us. And we pray, Lord, that you be with our administrative staff and the girls in the clerk's office that help us find everything every day. And we pray, Lord, that you guide the council and our citizens to make Attica a place that we're all very proud to live in. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if I can have your clerk call roll, please.
Mayor Grant.
Present.
Mrs. Carahan.
Present.
Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Pointer.
Present.
Welcome. Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Roderick.
Present.
Attorney Vars.
Present.
Junior counsel, Morgan Wood.
Here.
William Irwin. Jocelyn Burnett. Grace Hiller.
Here.
Kate Ashley. Mayor.
First of all, let's start out by welcoming and congratulating our new council member, James Pointer. Welcome, Mr. Pointer. Thank you for stepping up to the plate here, so to speak. At this time, I would be proud to honor Aubrey Bartoliak, our 2025 USA National Folk Style Wrestling Champion. Would you like to come up here? And could I get both of our junior council members to come up as well? Got a little plaque here for you. I'll read it, and then we'll give it to you. Come on up, girls, so you can get your picture taken as well. The city of Attica wishes to congratulate and honor Aubrey Bartoliak for her 2025 USA National Folk Style Wrestling Championship, and thank you for representing Attica in such a positive way.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, that was short but sweet. We're happy for everything that you do, and our wrestling team is phenomenal. So lots of good things in the past and in the future there. Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting? That would have been March 10.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for March 10.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens petitions. And I had Mr. Watkins on the property down behind Old Depot. I don't see him here. I know the police chief was working on that property, and I think we made some progress this week on that, so we appreciate that.
Larry, what property is that?
602 North Second Street.
It's down behind where the old depot was at, and that was probably gone by the time you came to Attica. It's just on the other side, the railroad tracks going north and across the tracks.
Oh, just across, and it's like over that way?
Yes, down the, you make an immediate turn after you go across railroad tracks. It's down there.
Oh, so it kind of curls down? And it curls all the way down back there? Is that where Peewee for sale was back there? Okay, alright.
Pass that down. You can kind of, that's the view from beacon. You can see that it's not a good situation down there. There's, there's things, trailers and things on the city right of way.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Not good. So he's not here. Are there any other citizens petitions this evening? Does anybody need to come to the council and discuss? Mr. Kimpel?
I just wanted to thank the fire department and the police department. Last couple weeks, we've had a lot go on in our community, going around accidents and everything. And too many times, they don't get appreciated the way they should out in the community. So I just, as a member, I wanted to say thank you guys.
Thank you. Under committee reports, I did not have anything, but Baker Tilly is here with our annual report, and I'd like to go ahead and slip them in here, and we'll get them on their way.
Alright, sounds good. Well, thank you for having me. I'm Austin Johnson from Baker Tilly, here to go over the TIP management report. We're reporting on 2024 information. Might be more familiar with Heidi or Kyle, who I also work with very closely. But I had to say another day, we've knocked out this requirement, so we'll kind of go through some of the basic TIP mechanics and some of the reporting requirements, and then we'll go over the actual report that we submitted. So on the second slide, goes through the RDC reporting requirements. So April 1st is when the fiscal plan is due. That's the first requirement of the year that Joanne knocked out. So we have, now we are on to the April 15th report. TIP management is due to the DLGF via the Gateway website tomorrow. So, but there's also, as of last year.
Excuse me, what's the DLGF?
The Department of Local Government Finance.
Okay, thank you.
Starting last year, this report is required to be presented to the council. That's why we're here for you guys today.
It'd be great to get it ahead of time, actually, so we can look it over.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely make sure.
There's not anything you need to do with it. Literally, it's just an informational purpose.
Well, if we can, if we want to respond to it, I mean, if there's a lot.
No, there's nothing to respond to. It literally is for informational purposes only.
I don't understand, Joanne.
This is, this is part of the redevelopment commission.
Okay.
And we're just required to provide the information to you. There's not any kind of response or anything that's required. It's just a.
Do you think it's unreasonable to ask for it beforehand?
No, no, it's not a problem. I'm just saying that there's not anything you need to respond to. It really doesn't involve the council at all.
This doesn't, well, why do we have it then if it doesn't involve?
It does involve the council as far as the city goes, because we're the ones that approve the TIP and all that.
That's exactly right, yeah. So this is important.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanne.
Awesome.
So then, the next requirement after the April 15th report is the pass-through determination. This is due June 15th. This is kind of establishes whether or not we, you guys decide to pass through any assessed value from the TIP areas back to the overlapping taxing units. In the past, no.
Can I ask, who are you guys? Is that the council?
We're municipal advisors to.
But when you said you guys, does that have council?
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
So the, yeah, so they're determined, sorry.
You're good, Austin.
Alright.
I just want to make sure I understand.
No, I, yeah, definitely. No, ask questions if you have them. I'll try and answer them. So it's due by June 15th. Previously, no assessed value has been passed through. Typically, we only see that once TIP areas are getting close to expiration. And I can kind of go through how that works on the next slide. But the next requirement would be the TIP neutralizations due August 1st. That's a calculation, it's a pretty in-depth technical calculation that we'll provide that is used to adjust the base assessed values in TIP areas based on trending factors. The next requirement, which is also new as of last year, is an RDC annual spending plan. So due December 1st is a spending plan that the RDC has to abide by essentially.
Can I ask what the RDC is?
Redevelopment Commission.
Okay, thank you.
The RDC has to prepare that by December 1st for the following year. And then annually, there isn't a due date necessarily, I guess, except for December 31st. But annually, there's a TIP presentation that's given where all of the overlapping taxing units of each TIP area are invited to an RDC meeting. This is more of a forward-looking report where we kind of go over, you know, future TIP revenue projections, long-term plans and impacts of the overlapping taxing units. So I believe we gave that in August of last year.
Yes.
Are TIPS still, from what we've done, are we still in the 25-year window, or has that changed to 20?
So you guys actually don't, there's no debt that is payable from any of the TIP areas that you guys have, so there is no expiration currently.
Okay.
Once debt is issued that is payable from the TIP, like that issuance date would start the 25-year clock.
So we're not even into our 25 years yet?
Right.
That's good news.
Yes.
Yeah.
So on the next slide, it's kind of a graph that helps visualize how TIP works. So when a TIP area is created, January 1 of the year of creation is the date in which the base assessed value is established. The base assessed value would be the net assessed value of the area at the time, as of January 1 of the year it's established. So that base assessed value still belongs to all the overlapping taxing units. Then once, you know, a project is constructed, there's new development and new assessment, that incremental assessed value is what is captured by the RDC and can be used for projects.
So I understand. I'm sorry, but I want to make sure we all understand too. But when we set this TIP and everything, it didn't actually start then. It starts the first time we have a project?
Yeah.
For the 25-year window?
Yeah, when you have bonds that are payable from the TIP, correct?
Okay.
We, I just might add, we start bringing income in.
Right.
But we, but the calendar, the time thing doesn't start until we start making payments out.
Okay.
And that's when that 25-year will, period will begin. But since we did that back in 2017, or whenever it was, we've just been getting money in.
I think that's great, because it's been eight years, and we haven't, we haven't started it yet.
Right, that podcast hasn't started ticking yet.
And we were told not to, based on Baker Tilly, don't start spending everything and thinking, well, we're gonna get all this money coming in. Wait until you have a sizable amount that you can do something important. And so that's why all this money has been coming in, and we have not, that's why the clock's not running yet.
Yeah, right.
That's gonna change, but right now, that's, that's where we are.
Well, I don't know if anybody else realized that, but I didn't know. I thought what you said, and I thought it started then.
That's good. Yeah, yeah, so very good.
Thank you for asking the question, Joanne.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
So then you can see in the kind of red box, that is, that represents once a, once a TIP area expires, then all the assessed value from that TIP area flows back into the, all the overlapping units. So that's when we see a lot of times with the pass-through determination, instead of all at once having all this assessed value flow back over time in the last few years of a TIP area, you might slowly kind of get some of that assessed value back to the overlapping units. So it's a more steady flow. Does that make sense?
So it doesn't happen all at once? It's not like, once you do that 25 years later, it's gonna go back. It goes back incrementally? Is that right?
Right, yeah, that's, yes. If you were to pass, that happens during the pass-through determination process.
Did you understand that? Because I'm not sure I do.
What question?
You need to go over it.
I, I, I'm not sure I quite understood that, that last part. Okay, so are you saying at the end of the 25 years? Is that what you're talking about?
At the end of the 25 years, whatever is left over. But you can pass through assessed value before that, during the pass-through determination process, so that you're not having all the assessed value that you've accumulated over the 25-year life just flow in all at once. You can kind of incrementally do that.
So, for example, like, what, what do you see people doing in that case? Not, not people, but, but what do you see cities doing then?
In my limited experience, it's usually, you know, the last five years or so of a TIP, that's when we can provide analysis on.
Okay, great. I'll be dead by then, so that's alright.
The, the bottom line is, it's not all, it's not, at the end of the 25 years, 100% of it goes back to the taxing districts. It's gonna distribute it back a little bit at a time based on how much of it you've used over that 25 years.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. I think that's all we have for that slide. The next slide is just a few of the purposes for TIP. Obviously, it can be used to finance incentives.
Hold this up on DLGF.
For private areas. Or infrastructure areas. It can also be used to, you know, encourage economic growth, redevelop lighted areas. But we just wanted to make a little note at the end, just so there, there's no confusion that, you know, companies in TIP areas are still paying property taxes. It's just where it's being allocated.
So, so what I'm looking at here, fund balances, then, as of 12/31/24, the TIP fund is actually almost a half million dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Exactly, yeah.
Great.
It is great.
Great. You got some bullets for a gun, don't you? That's great.
So then the next slide is just the RDC members. Don't really have much to add there. And then the slide after that shows the Attica TIP allocation area that was established in 2017. As you can see, no expiration date yet. And then that second line item where we have the amendment, that was an amendment in 2019 to designate a taxpayer so that the RDC can capture personal property tax increment. So.
So, Austin, okay, so since the, the TIP has not actually started, okay, what is the action that starts the TIP payments? Like, okay, or, I guess the TIP has started, but no payments have been issued. So then what is, what's the act that occurs to actually allow those payments to begin?
You'd have to issue bonds that are payable from the TIP that have a pledge of the TIP to repay them.
Okay, now is that gonna be an action by the council then?
No.
It's not?
Redevelopment.
The redevelopment, but then will they bring it to the council then to?
No.
They're 501(c)(3). They're on their own.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, yeah. I, I've only been on the city council for four months, okay? And this is a lot to chew down. And Jimmy's actually been here even less. I want to make sure that I understand what we're talking about here. So that's the reason why I'm asking the questions.
No, that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure people understand.
Quick question. Is it, is it any expenditure or bonds or loans?
It's bonds specifically payable from.
You in essence could spend 500,000, and that would not start the 25 years because you haven't leveraged any money.
Right, correct. You can spend that as long as there's no bonds associated with that.
It's when you borrow money, essentially.
So to understand that, they could spend their 594,000, or 494,000, and that wouldn't start?
Right.
To a degree, yeah. Hey, that's great.
Right, okay.
That's why I have a next slide. So then, yeah, we kind of went over some of this already, but for the finances, 160,000 in TIP revenues from this year, so that's what the allocation area is currently generating. And then 20,000 in expenditures. You can see the breakout. Just below, it's essentially all professional services, financial and legal related to the TIP. And then no grants or loans, and no TIP distributed to other units, so that's something we report on, but it didn't apply here.
So, Austin, just, just, what kind of professional services are we talking about for 20 grand generally?
That would cover our fees and legal fees. Yeah, so whenever we ever put this presentation or any of the other RDC reporting requirements that we listed in the presentation as well, so.
Okay. And do you anticipate that to stay the same from year to year? Or is that something that now that the TIP has been established, that we would be paying less? Or, you know, do you have any kind of feel on that?
Do you want to?
Cindy.
Because 20 grand's a lot.
No, it really isn't, because we also have, we hire Tom Pittman's legal firm, and he's kind of the guru in developing TIP areas. And he wrote, when we need something involving a TIP area, we, we defer to Tom, and he comes up with the ordinance or whatever legal is necessary for us to move ahead. As in the purchase of new property, as we want to expand the TIP area, if we want to expand the allotment area, we contract his, him for the expertise of doing that. So in fact, this year, the amount is going to be more than 20,000, I would imagine.
Now, when you talk about an ordinance though, is that an ordinance that's gonna be brought to the city council then?
Have you received that ordinance?
Yes, so the, like, the economic development department, there we go, keep on pointing at district. It's not a district, it's a department. That, Tom Pittman drafted that one. Same for the fire protection territory, at least, Tom Pittman did.
Okay, I, I'll just tell you, we had, I think it was last, the last city council where we had some stuff that we had to approve. And, and man, I'll tell you what, I, I was really uncomfortable approving that, but I listened to what people said, and it seemed like it was the right thing to do. But honestly, I wasn't informed the way I needed to be. And, and I was uncomfortable. I was uncomfortable when I just get an ordinance put underneath of me and say, okay, sign it, you know? It's like, I really would like to see it coming and have a little bit of knowledge that this is gonna be put in front of us, you know, to, to sign. And I have a feeling we have another one. I was looking at my stack here, and there's a few ordinances here, and it's first blush for me. And so it makes me just a little.
First blush for a lot of us.
Okay, oh, it is? Okay, alright, we'll get it. I just want to make sure that, I want to have as much time as possible to look at these things and just soak it up and understand. I, I want to do the best I can for the citizens of Attica, and I'm not doing the best if I don't know what I'm doing, right? And so.
So do you think a refresher on the TIP area would be appropriate, since we've got two relatively?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm glad Wayne's sitting here, because he's been through all of it, and Larry has too. And frankly, Nate's only been here for a year. I mean, so.
Tipped an awfully big sample.
And it's a big, yeah, that's a big deal. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. So, and I didn't mean to tangle with yet Joanne, but I just.
And there's changes that have happened since we originally did it, because originally, you had to connect everything that was in a TIP district. But now, you can connect by dots, I guess, throughout the city.
And they said, based on our size, the allotment area, you've got the TIP area where you actually can generate the money, the TIP money, and then you've got the allotment area where you can spend it. And so we made an adjustment, an ordinance that incorporated the whole city of Attica. Because of the size of our community, it made sense.
And that's what we did last time, right?
Yeah, it makes more sense, so we can utilize that money from, you know, up here on Taco Bell, or the, you know, assisted living down here somewhere else. But we've expanded that to include all of Attica.
Yeah, and that made sense. That made sense, yeah.
And you can't just put somebody in a TIP that's, that's already been here. I mean, you can put them in the area, but unless they do improvements and increase, to increase their business and everything, that's the only way you'll get incremental sales from their, their taxes.
Okay.
Or incremental.
Yeah, the, the, the money that comes in on TIP is what their original tax allotment was, or, you know, put on them in January. And how they've increased that, it's that difference that goes into the, to the TIP budget.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's not all of their tax dollars.
So there's a baseline, basically?
Yes, yes. Then he still is able to collect the baseline, and that additional goes into the TIP.
And the original, when we set the TIP, it was when Copes and Co. was on.
On trace, yeah, on trace.
I've been ill with a lot of them, can't remember. But that, that's when they, they hadn't paid any taxes yet, so we were able to get, get a board for all those.
Oh, okay.
Because they hadn't paid anything yet.
Oh, okay. So their baseline's zero.
Right.
Cindy, the annual meeting in August, when Baker Tilly comes out and does the annual review, that would probably be a good time, because they do explain everything.
Casey's and all those, they should be.
Oh, right from the start?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Because that, that whole area is out there, so. Sorry, I was just talking about Casey's and all those. They'll be in the, the new TIP because they've boarded there.
And Taco, and Taco Bell, too.
Yep.
The way to look at it is, TIP districts is another way to keep that tax money in the city versus going back to Big Brother. It, it's a good tool for towns and cities and counties.
It's for economic development.
Yeah. Well, I understand the concept with TIP. I just didn't understand all the, how it impacts me making decisions for, you know, the citizens of Attica. So that's the reason why.
Well, and, and it stipulates that they are two different, you know, the TIP makes their resolutions in their ordinances that when we have a payment that we have to go, I was told today by Tom Pittman that that does not need to go to the Board of Works, because we are in control of that money.
You've already been given that, that control.
Yes, based on what the Economic Redevelopment Commission is. It's in the definition of what we can and cannot do.
Okay.
Does, does that help? Does that help any?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's basically explained.
I, I, I don't want to belay with those guys, but unless you want to be down midnight, we need to keep.
Anything out there, really. I don't know about Tractor Supplies and Say Sold, but that was a business before. It was ShopCo.
Yeah.
Didn't.
If they did improvements, is.
And they did. They put a greenhouse in and.
Yep.
Whatever the improvements are.
So we would have capitalized on some there, too.
Austin, thanks a lot. And I apologize for, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I just, I, I, you know, just want to make sure that we're, we're understanding what you're, what you're telling us. And unfortunately, it's nature to be, you've got some newbies here, you know?
Trust me, when I was a newbie to this stuff, it was all gone over my head, so.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, your presentation.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that was pretty much all the presentation. Obviously, you have half a million almost in the allocations fund already, so that's great. As that continues to grow, you can use that money towards projects.
That's great.
Yeah, that's all I have. And the last slide, you have my contact information as well as Heidi and Kyle's. So if you have any additional questions, feel free to, say anytime.
Yeah, it's very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We're at committee reports. Citizens petitions. I saw Mr. Watkins come in. You, you missed your, your cue to relate. But the chief, when it comes his turn, can report on where we're at with the property that you wanted to discuss tonight. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Junior council reports. Do you ladies have anything for us?
Um, well, I just wanted to let everyone know that the pool is almost done. It's, it got filled with water this week, so they just have to treat it. And so then our sprint team will be back. I am on the track team, so I'm grateful to say that I got to have my first home track meet in, I think it was eight years. And there was long jump, high jump, pole vault, throw, discus. So that was nice. The tennis courts are almost done. They just have to wait till it warms up for a little bit to put the pickleball lines on and level it out fully. The football field's completely done, and then we'll be good. And I wanted to thank you guys, I noticed we're there for our local job fair. That was last week, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Larry, that might be a good opportunity for me to segue into, just so I know, it's like we're, you know, you guys have had a long day already. But I wanted to, the Attica baseball team's really doing well this year. And the community has really rallied around the baseball team. I'm in the press box, and when I go through and I announce all the advertisers that are supporting the baseball team, it takes a couple innings, because I can't get it all through with the wackery. And I bet, I bet there are 40 to 50 different advertisers, and I'll, and Mr. Moss here is one of them. And, and so that's fantastic. And then not only that, but over the weekend, a coach called me and said, hey, you have a few hours? And I said, well, what are we gonna do? And he said, well, Mike Alsop Chevrolet spent, I think it was about $7,000 on buying a Big Bubba Elite batting cage. And so, Coach, myself, Leonard Keller, and Rod Christ were out there trying to figure out how the heck to put this thing together behind the, the school. But it's absolutely amazing, and the fact that Alsop Chevrolet stepped up to provide that, and.
To those.
Yes, yeah, and I just wanted to, you know, put that out there.
Well, thank you.
Another thing I would like to add with the baseball and softball, I heard we have one of the nicest diamonds or so.
The, the playing fields are as good as any in this part of Indiana. Yep, that's true. It's amazing. Yeah, yep, yep, that's true.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did put a note on here, just let everybody know that I was contacted by one of the county commissioners in Vermillion County, and they are partnering with North and South Vermillion Schools to model a junior council after ours. So a lot of that goes back to you ladies and, and your cohorts that have helped get this junior council going. And they, they wouldn't have asked to do it had it not been for you. So gave them all the information that, that we used, and you probably know the principal down at South Vermillion, Kara. She was very excited. I spoke with her, and they're gonna roll this out down there. So congratulations.
Yeah, fantastic.
We'll go ahead and move on to department heads, Mr. Swank wasn't available tonight, he's at a gas leak here in town. Chief Miller?
I guess we'll start with a report on North Second Street, that's six zero two on Second. This has been a process through the court system for quite some time, it was, there's really a problem out here that's been going on for, for a while, but we're able to link the police department with the city department with the trash and everybody else, and we started cleaning up that property on Wednesday. At this point, I believe we pulled four forty yard dumpsters out of there. The guys have been down there working diligently, we've got with the, the fire department to do some other activities to clean up down there. Given a company sixty days, there's about thirty, twenty-five to thirty cars located behind the property down the hill. We've given them sixty days to get those cleaned up, trying to limit the hours that, and manpower that the city guys are spending down there to clean this property up. We've got more court process to go through with the property on different, on other aspects. But we're pretty well headed full board. It's, as you probably have been made aware, either by driving around town or by social media. Multiple vehicles were stickered this week with more to go for illegal parking, inoperable, no registration. I want the public to know, opposite to media belief, we did not target it or target prom goers. This was, we went out and targeted vehicles that have become repetitive issues. And just trying to start that cleanup process, I felt like it was important for us to start that process of our ordinances here because, as we all know, tall grass, weeds, all those are right around the corner for us, so when the weather broke, we started cleaning up properties, there's about four properties on the list that we'll be moving dumpsters and skid steers and mini excavators to, to clean them up. I think those people are becoming very aware, very aware, quite rapidly, that either they clean their stuff up or, or we're gonna clean their stuff up for them and then they get to pay the bill. So let all your constituents know, like, we're gonna be out in full force, like I said, like fourteen vehicles on Saturday. Ordinances aren't about ticketing, they're not about money, they're about compliance, they're about cleaning up our city, whether that be tall grass and weeds, illegal parking, parking on side streets, inoperable vehicles, so the stickers are, are simply a notice of violation sticker giving them twenty-four hours to correct the issue. If the issue is not corrected after twenty-four hours, then we will be issued a citation to gain compliance, so that's our true goal out there, is to gain compliance on these ordinance issues. Trashcan sweeps will be happening on, on Wednesdays, same thing for the violations there, we're gonna notify people of the violation on first occurrence, give them twenty-four hours to correct the issue. And just for, and just build that repetitive nature so that we get our community cleaned, cleaned up. And those, and those areas get cleaned and people are doing the right things and understand that your trashcan being on the street does show some importance to the, to the cleanliness of the city. Besides that, Officer Smith started last Wednesday, he, we got him all his information done, so we currently have eight police officers inside of the police department, which is the first time since twenty twenty-three that we've done that. And Officer Alvin will graduate the academy on April the twenty-fifth. He'll come back for about four weeks of face retraining and hopefully we'll have him on the road.
Great.
About all I got.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Watkins, does that kinda answer your question?
For the most part, I do have a concern with William Scott next door on Mulberry Street two oh six, there's a trailer in the, in the city right away that's hooked up to water and sewer, city utilities, and as from what I would understand, speaking on Eric Swank, that, and the Mr. Mayor, the trailer's not supposed to be there. So I don't know if there is.
Where you're talking?
Uh, on the Mulberry Street, that trailer right across the street from that garage, you guys were parked there last Friday.
The Blue Room?
Billy's trailer, yeah, in that garage there.
That's more of the processes than we have to take through the court system.
Chief Little is not here this evening, this is Brogwater.
Just a couple things, I sent out the financials and the meeting minutes. And I also sent some information out to the council last week regarding Senate Bill One, which was passed last Thursday. It wasn't passed as it was originally introduced, but it is a bill designed to give property tax relief to citizens of the state of Indiana. But it also will have an impact on city revenues. There were also some wording and language in that that's making changes to the local income tax. And I've not digested the bill yet to really fully understand the local impacts of it. But just since we have new council members, the property taxes, that's what funds the redevelopment commissioner of the TIP, is property taxes. And property taxes for twenty twenty-five was, for the city budget was just shy of a million dollars.
I thought it was actually a tax on the sales of, it was actually, I thought the TIP was a tax on, on the sale of like food, things.
I think you're thinking of the one percent food.
Yeah, yeah.
That's different.
It's a different thing.
This is a, this is a portion of the property tax, it goes into the TIP fund.
Okay, so they have two things that are going into the TIP fund then, or is that a different?
No, it's, no.
Oh, it's different, okay, all right, okay, sorry, Jordan, I just wanted to share.
No, that's okay, I was just gonna say that.
Committee, and now it's gonna be going.
It was voted on Thursday, they voted on it on Thursday.
That day, okay.
They passed it Thursday.
It's not gonna be going to the House or anything like that.
The House passed it Thursday.
Oh, okay. Thought it was a committee, sorry.
Yeah, no, it went out of committee last Tuesday and went to the full House floor and it was voted on on Thursday. And it wasn't voted on as it passed out of committee, there were some amendments made to it prior to voting on it, but it was passed, there is property tax relief to a certain degree in there, which that's gonna equate to a loss of revenue for the city.
Yeah, you'd mentioned that in the footnote there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know what that loss of revenue is going to look like, like I said, I've not fully digested the bill. But there's also language in there that's going to impact the local income tax, which is also a revenue source for the city. I believe that they're, they lowered the cap on local income tax, I do not know what the county, what Fountain County's max local income tax is. But we have three different funds that are funded out of local income tax or lit revenue. Some of those funds go into our general fund, some go to our public safety, which our police and fire use to support their budgets, and the other goes into economic development. So this bill is gonna have some type of impact, not only on our TIP district, it's also going to have, if there's changes in the local income tax or cuts in that, that's going to impact, you know, economic development within the city, not TIP directly, but economic development, as well as our public safety and our general fund. So there's just, you know, information that's going to be coming, it's not gone to the governor yet, I don't believe, unless that happened today. But once I have an opportunity to really digest the bill, I'll have more information for you on what the local impact's going to be.
It could be substantial based on, you know, the way it's being written.
And I think it's gonna adversely impact smaller communities, more so than larger communities, because we don't have the level of revenue that the larger communities do. You know, some of the comments that I heard is that, well, larger communities can replace revenue by increasing their lit tax. Well, that might very well be, but the smaller communities are going to be import, you know, disproportionately impacted by the loss of revenue because that's, the property taxes are the major source of our revenue. So you start cutting our, our budget and it's gonna impact, it's gonna impact police, it's gonna impact, you know, road repairs, it's basically gonna in- impact the ability of the city to function.
So when will this go, when will this go into effect, did the governor still have to sign it yet?
I'm not sure.
It wouldn't be this fiscal year, it'd be.
Well, it's not twenty twenty-five, it's not twenty twenty-five, our revenues for twenty twenty-five are set.
Okay, so then what, if you were, your gut feel?
Oh, I have no idea.
You don't?
No clue, no clue.
Is, is, is this something that's on Baker Tilly's radar, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but.
It's not something that, we have an internal team that is tracking all of this information, so if that's something that you guys want more information on, you can definitely get in contact with people that have a lot.
Right.
Well, I know a lot of things have happened like mid-year in the past, but I didn't know that would have to go clear through twenty twenty-five before it would.
Our revenues are set for twenty twenty-five, I mean, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't see changes at the earliest in twenty twenty-six, at the very earliest. But our revenues are already set for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
You know, this is, this is one of those, and Joanne and I've talked in, in depth about this, and I know Dwayne and I talked about it, you know, this is, this is something that a lot of people, I don't wanna pay a lot of property taxes, and I don't think anybody sitting here does, but I don't know that everybody understands what really gets funded out of your property taxes. And it's easy to say, well, I don't, I don't wanna pay them, but it's not easy to say, I don't want the police and the fire, and I don't want my roads, and I don't want this. They still want, everybody still wants all the services that those property taxes pay for, they just don't wanna pay them. And, and I'm, I'm one of those people, I don't wanna pay them and I want those services, but I understand that it has to be if, if we're gonna continue to operate as a city. You know, our, our water and sewer is probably the only thing that's not funded out of property taxes, but at the end of the day, so I'm hoping they can get this straightened out and we can, we can survive it, that's probably a good way to put it.
So, Joanne, there would be other alternatives in case we do get hammered for, say, like ten percent of our budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, and they did say they have loophole in there for larger cities, and I don't know what that means, that larger cities could increase their income, local, their local income tax. But we weren't, we weren't one of the larger cities that could do that. So they could offset this, say Indianapolis, some of the larger places could offset this by increasing their, their local income tax, but we couldn't do that. So I don't know how it's gonna shake out, but it's, it's scary when you're trying to.
Can the governor veto it still?
He can, but I don't think he wants to.
I think he's pushing for it though.
Well, they all wanna be the one that lowers property taxes, but they'll let us pull the bag.
Did you have anything else, Mrs. Brodwater?
I don't, thank you.
Kyle, did you?
Well, I was just gonna argue, believe we could find other sources of revenue, i.e. like the vacant lots and things to encourage building and, and increase income that way, correct? And more business as far as like taxes and stuff as far as that.
We, we need to broaden our tax base, and, and that's one reason I've really been pushing hard toward the annexation of the property south of Attica, is that will increase our tax base. You know, you take places like Lafayette, this won't have as much impact on them because they've got a huge tax base. You know, they've, they've got more businesses, more properties than they know what to do with up there, they're building, they're building homes daily. They're building more homes than they can keep up with, where we're trying to get people to build homes here and increase our tax base. But that's, you know, that's slow going, and, you know, if we have an abrupt change in our income, it may take a long time to recover from that, even if, even if we, we annex and we get infrastructure south of town and we start building homes out there, more businesses or whatever the case is, it's not gonna happen overnight. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Brodwater?
No, thank you.
Unfinished business, we talked about this a little bit in the last meeting, rental housing inspections, an additional part-time position to assist in inspections and building permits. Mr. Nos asked me to send that to him, since we're having trouble getting people to, to apply for that, hopefully he can help us out there, Kyle. And send some people our way, or somebody our way that's qualified for that and interested in doing that. Again, annexation of Harrison Hills and property south, we're still working on that, I have a meeting next week with one of those property owners. The ambulance relocation progress, spoke with the superintendent of schools this week and, or this past week, and they have a executive meeting on the twenty-eighth to discuss the disposition of the elementary school and those properties, and hopefully we'll have some answers on that. For those of you that don't know, we've been asking for the property directly across from the old football field, there's a little kind of a peninsula that sticks out there off the grade school property that, that we're looking at, that already has a little shed on it. And we'd like to build the new ambulance shed there. We're still marching forward with the grant applications, and that's moving along smoothly according to Christie Gerald, our grant writers. So we're hoping to get that to come to fruition. Council redistricting mandate, map review and ordinance, and I think that our legal counsel has that, I sent out the, the last map to everyone in this last week, that's been kind of a fiasco because they, they left, they left a portion of the city out of that and we had to put it back in, it changed the balance of some of the districts. And all at the same time, we were trying to keep everybody that's on the council in their district. I've been assured by the folks that are doing the maps for the state of Indiana, they're doing them all over the state, that as long as you are in your new place of residence prior to the next time you get elected, you're in good shape, so that made me feel a little bit better.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I'll bet.
So just to recap here on this one, every ten years when there's a census, you are supposed to reevaluate your voting districts and determine whether or not you need to adjust boundaries so that the districts are near as equal as possible. Obviously in twenty twenty, there were some other things going on and a lot of municipalities did duck it around to this, because a lot of them were even beating. And so now there's a mandate that you must redistrict by June thirtieth of this year or you lose all of your funding. So if you don't wanna pass it tonight, that's fine, but you really should consider passing it next month or the month after, we're really gonna have a problem.
Well, we, well, we did pass it though, right?
Well, we approved, we approved the last map and it was in error because it left off that Avenue Eight.
Yeah.
So this is the corrected version with the legal descriptions, they parallel the legal descriptions that are currently codified but updated, obviously with the new boundaries. So just as a reminder, the tolerable limit for the deviation between districts is ten percent. You guys were at eight percent, and that might have been based on a wrong map as well, and with the new districts, your deviation is at about three percent, so it's a lot more equal, which is a good thing. And so that's kind of why we have to redo this now, so you don't necessarily have to pass it tonight, but you are strongly encouraged to pass it within the next two meetings or so.
So this doesn't have to happen again until twenty thirty then?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Basically, we've already sent it to the committee and they've approved it and everything.
Yep, and this is kind of the last.
And I've sent this to the, to the county as well, to the clerk's office and they've reviewed it, she, she wrote me back.
So do we need a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero four one four A.
I'll second it.
I just have a question, did anybody read it yet?
I looked at the map.
I looked at the map that was sent, yeah.
But did you read the ordinance itself?
Yeah.
I haven't read it yet, I just saw it, so Jimmy, have you read it?
I mean, if we take the time to read all of these, this is why we have a lawyer, she, she drafts.
Okay, if we don't have, if we don't have time to read it, then why have a council?
Johnny, this is why we have a lawyer, these are all.
No, 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 wait a minute, if I'm being asked to, to approve this, and if I don't have time to read it, then I'm not doing my job.
That's fine, you can absolutely vote no.
Yeah.
Right now.
Or you can abstain.
Or you can abstain, that's fine, or we don't have to pass it.
Or I could actually just ask to see these things before the council, right?
When, when was this drafted?
I finished the legal descriptions last night, but the ordinance itself has been on the table since January, I just inserted the legal descriptions.
I, this is the first that I've seen.
Obviously, we've had it, I mean, I brought a draft and we had the first map in January or February, I mean, it's been the same.
But there have been changes, right?
The legal descriptions have been updated with the new map, yes.
All I'm just saying is, is that I would like to have a minute to just look over these things, I mean, is, is that fair? I'd instead of ramrod this through?
Nobody's trying to ramrod anything through, all I am saying is, this is the only thing that's sharing on here that's different, was that it was updated. All I am saying is, this is the only thing that's sharing on here that's different, was that it was updated from the map that was sent. And all the, it's just a legal, it's just a legal description.
Do you look at the other ordinance and then look at this one to see what the differences were? Have you physically looked at it?
Yes, I did, I looked, I mean, I.
When did you, because I, we just got.
Guys, it's been motioned, it's been seconded, let's, can we move forward with this? Have a motion second. Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I mean, is this how we're going to run things? Just, you know, give it to us and say, yes or no? Is that how we're going to do it?
I mean, you don't have to, I just present the ordinances, it's up to the council on to that.
Okay, because I, I think, I'm the wrong guy for this, if this is the way we're going to do it, okay? Because I need to look at things, okay, before I make decisions.
There is a, Johnny, there is a fine balance between ramrod-ing things through and making informed decisions and making things too complicated to get anything done. And we can't get down the weeds on every subject that comes up. Or again, we'd be here till midnight every time, and we'd be meeting three, four times a month. We, we have to be able to, to be able to react to things as they come. I try very, very hard to send out information as it comes to me, to the council members and to the people that I think that need that information ahead of time. I didn't have this new ordinance until today, so I, I didn't send that out to everybody, but.
You didn't send it to everybody?
There's, you know, check, all I can say is check your emails frequently.
I did, I did, these were there.
I, again, there's a fine balance between ramrod-ing things through and getting things done and bringing things to reach them home.
Can I ask you then, am I not one of the council members that is entitled to look at these things? Do you have?
You've got the same information everybody else got. When I send out an email to the council, your name's on the list.
Okay, because you just said that you were having conversations with other council members, and I just want to make sure that, you know, myself and Mr. Pointer are included in.
Did I have, did I say I had a conversation with other council members? I don't think so.
This is the first time I've seen it tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, I remember assessing it.
You, you've got, you've got the, you've got the order, everybody got the ordinance, less the legal descriptions. The legal descriptions were updated based on, you know, I tried really hard, like I said, to make sure everybody stayed, and, and everybody being you, stayed in your district.
And I appreciate that, and we talked about that, and we talked about.
I, I don't know what else I could have done. You know, I've spent an inordinate amount of time on this map and dealing with these people back and forth and back and forth. And I'm not going to forward every conversation that I have with these people to everybody on this council.
Not asking to, only thing is, when we're approving, okay, just like, just like in business. I mean, Nate Moss is not going to sit there and sign, you know, documents, okay, that he just looked at, okay, for his business. He's not going to, and he's definitely not going to sign a document that is different than the one that he looked at before.
And, and, you know, you're free to make a motion at any time on anything to say, I'd like to table this until the next meeting. And if everybody agrees with that, then, then we can do that.
I just want to go on record as saying, I would like, if possible, to be able to review things as much as possible. That's all I'm saying.
I, I understand, and, and I guess it's a reoccurring theme, I get this from you a lot, that you're keeping me in the dark. I'm not trying to keep anybody in the dark here, especially you. I, I try to be very transparent with everything that comes across my desk. I don't always think to send everything, if, if I send everything out to the council that comes across that desk every day, you'd be inundated with emails, and you probably wouldn't look at anything because you, you'd have too many.
I've had like three emails since the last meeting, okay, three emails, and, and then we come in and we've got a stack of papers, okay? And so I'm just saying, I'm just saying that.
This is the first time I've seen these ordinances tonight.
You're, you're not wrong.
They're not on the agenda.
I don't think that you're wrong, I mean, it's what I meant with this was, this is something, this is what I get frustrated with, with been doing this for six, seven years now. I get frustrated because it takes, this, again, not you, this is a general, it takes us forever to do one single thing. Not a you thing, not you at all, for the past six years, it's taken us forever to do one little thing. This, to me, was out of probably what we're doing, pretty straightforward, only because I felt like we've discussed it, we agreed on it, we sent the map, that's literally the only reason why I do feel comfortable in that one. So when I say that to you, you're not wrong.
The thing is, is that we have this ordinance, and then we have this ordinance, and we have this ordinance, okay? And I got a big stack of papers here that I haven't even had a chance to read.
And we could totally, we could table some of these, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I, I.
That's all you got to say really, is I'm not comfortable with this, now can we table it?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
All, all I'm saying is, I just want us to have a little time, and you know, I'm on, I'm on your guys' side, I'm on your side.
I get it, one taken.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to leave, but I need to go pick up my little sister.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Bye, Grace.
She's like, I'm getting back.
Uh, yeah, I'm getting a call.
So.
Now watch, we're getting a call.
Okay, that one's out of the way. I, I guess now would probably, before we go to the rest of these bullet items, we go ahead and go through the rest of the ordinances that you're presenting tonight.
Okay, do you want to do Tom Pittman's economic developments first, or do you want to do the access to public records and talk about penalties?
Let's do Tom Pittman's first.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
To go along with this. So Johnny would like to be able to review, is there any of these that can be held off for, till the next meeting? Any, like, do you know what I'm saying, is there any that, that we could?
Just add to the, to the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, and I only say that, is there any that we could, that you're like, oh yeah, this is an easy one?
The ones with the fire territory, no.
The, so that is.
Those have to be passed tonight.
Okay, is there, and, but the, let's see.
Access to public records is fine, if you can, that one's not urgent.
The economic development one probably needs to be done this evening?
Yes, because that ball started rolling at 8 o'clock this morning.
Okay, and then what about the penalties one?
The Attica Fire Protected Territory, that's the one that, okay, let's talk about.
The penalties one needs to be filled in, so that one is discussion before that's even ready to be passed.
That's a discussion, okay, so.
So let's go back to this one, now what are we doing? Are we table it till the next meeting?
It was already passed, it was passed, yeah, we passed, it was passed.
Okay, very good.
You voted on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, sorry, I just was making.
I'm all confused now.
So we can probably table, at least for right now, the access to public records one, and then the rates.
Which one is that one?
That's this one, it's got this big thing.
0414?
They're all 0414. It's the access to public records one, and then this one goes with it, where it's just the rates.
Procedures for allowing access to public records.
And the, the other one is just the rates one, so we can, that, it kind of goes along hand in hand with it.
Is that the rates for, for this public?
No, no. Just the reimbursement rate for Joanne to do research for access to public records request?
I don't even have that one, I don't think.
The one is just a single sheet. And then the other one says access to public records.
And here's mine too.
I'm going to put that in here. Oh, here's this one, here you go, Johnny, do you have that one?
What did we talk about?
All right.
He has the single.
I didn't, I didn't have that one.
Okay, so access to public records and the reimbursement rate ordinance, those ones work for the clerk to up her fees to do research for access to public records. It sounds like we're tabling until next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds great, I'd like to.
Have a motion, table those till the next month, it sounds like I do.
I make a motion. I make a motion.
Have a motion second.
I'll second.
Motion second all in favor.
Aye.
Table those two till the end, till next month.
Okay, what about the ordinance establishing a uniform section of penalties?
We can do that one, that one's probably going to take the longest, but we can do that one now if you'd like. So basically, what's going on, so the city's been in the process of recodifying, I think, for like five, six years now, seven years now, since Dad and I took over. And so basically, the code section that you have currently references the wrong statutes, so it's been repealed and replaced, but it's also missing a couple sections. So what this does is it sets up Joanne so that if Garrett issues a citation, it's at or under $250, and they admit the ordinance violation, they can pay that in her office without having to go to city court. Streamlines it a little bit. It also provides a basic penalty of $250, that's statutory, if there is no penalty kind of assigned to that ordinance and somebody violates it. And so those are kind of the general ones, and so they can either admit it, pay it at Joanne's office, or they can deny it, and then we can go to court, or if it's in excess of $250, then we would go to city court as well. So all of these are per day per penalty violations, so if somebody, you know, has a dog running at large three times in one week, the total penalty assessed could be $750 because it's a per occasion penalty. What needs work is the specific penalties that are assessed in your code section. There's a couple problems with these, the first is that there are some graduated penalties, where first offense is X amount, second offense is X amount, third amount is whatever amount. That requires a lot of bookkeeping to figure out what each person is on penalty wise. The other problem is that there are ranges of fines, and it can go from like 25 to $2,500, and those are really bad because those kind of set you up for a discrimination lawsuit. So we need to narrow down and set a fixed amount for what each ordinance violation is, and that's kind of what we're doing here.
So basically, like violations of 91.02 animal nuisances, there's a cat that would cover running at large, confinement, dangerous animals, number of animals, care required, abandoned prohibited, abandonment, odor responsible for waste, inoculation, those would all fall under that and be the same amount?
They can, or you can do different amounts if you'd like. So for example, I think in the past we had discussed, you know, odor responsible for waste, if you see that, maybe that's not worth a hundred dollar fine, maybe that's worth, you know, a $10 fine.
I'll be honest with you, I think this needs some, some time, and I, and I know Garrett wants it.
Larry, didn't we have a meeting last year where we set a working session with the council? Where we broke all this stuff down, and at that point in time, Ingrid, they elected to go to a $250 flat rate.
I, I remember that, I remember us establishing.
Yes, on every, every ordinance that was covered there. So that's where, that's where.
Yeah, it seems like we've digressed.
We had the phone conversations last week when I was notified that we didn't have this in place. We had a special working session with a work, with us, with a council back in 2024, the beginning of 2024, where we went through every one of these ordinance, it's sitting right in this room, and it was elected to do a $250 ordinance violation fee because we had, this is $15, this is $25, the second offense is $50.
It's way too convoluted.
And that still doesn't fix the first part of being able to admit in Joanne's office without having to go to city court.
Okay, so we've, they, at some point, they've already elected to go to the $250 flat rate, so where, so all we're needing to do is reevaluate the ordinance that allows them to admit?
Basically, and then repass the section that says all violations are going to be treated the same, and they're all $250.
That's what I was asking, because I thought we did.
I'd like to, I'd like to find that in minutes, but I'm, I'm 99% sure we did that.
I remember talking about it.
I remember talking about it, but I never.
I'm trying to remember.
The only thing is, when you start talking about, like, you get into the thousands of dollars in these and stuff like that, you know, I, if I sign my name to that, and somebody comes up to me and says, hey, you know what's happening to me? Why is this, I'm really angry, it's like, I need to be able to, you know, tell them, it's like, hey, this is what it is, this is what we.
Just as I said earlier too, the ordinance thing is about compliance, you know?
I agree, I understand, I understand.
We've been doing deed we for sale property for six or seven years.
Yes.
You know, this is, our last effort is to issue an ordinance violation.
I understand, and I agree with that.
If we've put in that kind of, and given them that opportunity to get to the point where my department is issuing ordinance violation, we're not going to go out there, if a car's not moved, and we've issued an ordinance violation, and it's not moved the next day, go issue another one, we got plenty of other things.
And Garrett, I agree, I agree, you've been very gracious, you've been very gracious.
It's about that, it's about that compliance factor. But the other thing is, is, you know, when we were at $5 and $25, when, when we tied this thing up into about 60 days of, of going through the state statute system of ordinance violations, and go to city court and pay off-duty officers and, and pay the city attorney to come down here and, and represent us in that city court. If they're taking us to court on that, we're, we're losing big time, you know? We, we might as well set our hands and not do that, because if they're taking us to court, we're going to be so negative in that, in our, in our fund line after that. It's going to cost the city lots of money.
I got a question, I got a lady who lives just two houses down from me, she's on fixed income. She puts her can if it's out there in the road, but she just puts it up on the curb, is she going to get a fine? That's my question, she's on, and she's unable to take it up her hill.
So we've asked.
That's what I'm asking, I mean, you got your sidewalk, and then your grass curb, and then the road, and like I say, I know she was unable.
Yeah, we, we, we've asked the people in the community to get with the mayor's office and the clerk's office, and notify them of disabilities and things like that that would prevent them from being able to do it.
Saying, but there was a couple in our neighborhood that the trash company would actually come up and get their can for, take it.
They get grandma's every day.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
But, but again, we're going to attempt to gain compliance prior to that, we're not just going to go by their sticker, sticker $250 ordinance violation. We're going to, we're going to make a sticker, sticker that, and then she's going to call, and then I'm going to get the person to talk to her, she's going to get to explain her situation to me, so that we can prevent an ordinance violation, and, and figure out some kind of assistance to help her get her trash can to.
When we, when we first started enforcing this, and it was getting way, way out of hand.
Sure, I've seen it.
And I had a guy come into my office and say, we just moved here from Lafayette six months ago, and we thought you were supposed to leave them out along the curb, because all my neighbors left theirs out along the curb. We didn't know we were supposed to take them back. And he says, we'll be glad to take them back, he says, our neighborhood looks so much better now that everybody's pulling them back. So, you know, it's one of those situations where if, if I see Dwayne's is sitting out, well, why should I pull mine back? And, and it's the same way, you know, around the table here, if we, if we let that go, nobody, there's no peer pressure there or anything.
Garrett, I know you want this, okay, and it sounds like it's already been done before, but in, in, in favor to Jimmy and I, okay? Is there any way to where we could table this for, and meet again in two weeks instead of a month or something?
I don't know that it needs to wait, I mean, two, it's not, I don't know.
I, I would just like to, well, should I table it?
We can table it sometime.
I, I want to get something to Garrett, but I, I just want to be able to read it, you know what I'm saying?
But, you know, Garrett's, Garrett's working hard to try to make people compliant.
Back off of that stuff until we get a, a clear path.
Do you guys have a bigger issue? If you've already passed it, you passed it, like, if it's different, you don't table something you've already passed. Well, it hasn't been passed though, because it, it, there's a problem with.
We did discuss it, we did, we spent time.
We discussed it, but I don't know whether we actually passed it.
But the updated version was not.
I don't have a problem, I just don't want some old lady to tell me social security, get beat up.
And she's not going to get beat up.
This is trying to give us a chance to put a more specific or appropriate.
My problem is, my problem is with this, that all of our ordinance violations are going to go on hold for a month because we don't want to sign off on this, even though we've agreed that $250.
Set the specific penalty at $250 and pass it tonight?
The, the difference is that it gives them an opportunity to come into the clerk's office and pay ahead of time rather than go to court. That's really the only difference.
That's really the only difference.
What'd you say, Ingrid?
You can set the specific penalty at $250 for each violation and pass it tonight, that's acceptable, I can run it like that.
Now, what's that?
You can set a specific penalty at $250 for all ordinance violations and pass it as is tonight, with a specific penalty at $250 per specified ordinance.
I think we should do that, so at least we have something.
That was done before?
Yes. I don't know that, from the sounds of it, we didn't pass it as through an ordinance, so.
I, I, my whole thing is, I don't want to wait a month for these guys to go out and issue more citations. I, I don't want to give people months to recoup here, especially in the springtime.
Especially this time, because now everybody's, yards are going to start growing, there's going to be a lot of things going on.
I don't want to tell them to back off, that if we do, just kind of pass a blanket violation penalty, that we can come back and put a more specific, after we've had a chance to look at it. Again, that, that dirties the waters, because now you get back to what Garrett said, well, this one's 10, and this one's 20, and this one's 50, and, and then when they go to court, we lose money on it, even if they pay the fine, because you, you're paying a cop to come in here, you're paying a legal counsel, you're paying everybody to be here, and you're, you're, you're not getting anything other than maybe some compliance.
So, and, and just for, just for number reference, we, we were on this big push last summer as well. We had, we had eight court cases, reference ordinances out of over 60 ordinance violations that we wrote. We're running over a 93% compliance rate. This is just, we finally had enough, we, this is, we got to ask the court for assistance because the person is not complying. This is where we, we go to issue.
So there's a clause in here that says whenever a minimum, but not maximum fine or penalty is imposed, the court may at its discretion find the offender any sum exceeding the minimum fine or penalty so imposed, but not exceeding one thousand dollars. So if somebody has actually been fined two hundred and fifty dollars, then the court can actually then find them. The judge could find them more.
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's, there's that clause in this ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, yeah. I remember coming in here one time and, and, and a guy was ordered to clean up his property. He said, well, the last time you gave me thirty days cleaning up, told the judge that. Which, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
The last time you told me this.
So he can play thirty days every time.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of his idea that he was always going to get thirty days cleaned up from the judge.
Well, I just, like I said, I just wanted to know what the other clauses were because it's just not two fifty, you know, we're, we're not saying it's just.
Well, it could be two, it could be more than that. If he comes in here four or five times and the judge decides that, but it gives the judge some leeway to find him more if he feels like they're using the system.
For example, where I've seen that you see two hundred and fifty more often than not is animal cruelty. Where if somebody does something, you know, really atrocious to an animal, the judge will usually bump that past two fifty.
Rightfully so.
I was like, rightfully so. But I'm saying the last like two or three times, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Kimpel?
I just want to say this to the council. For years has been an ongoing problem here in Attica about ordinances, has been. And two hundred and fifty bucks, someone violates ordinance, they're working with them. But the problem is we got people in our community that's going to play that game when they're fined twenty five dollars.
True.
And I, there's a house right across the street from me that we've been dealing with for over three years. And yeah, there's a situation that if, if nobody person bought a trash can. But there's avenues in place if that person has probably called up here, they can be easily resolved. But two hundred and fifty dollars, we've got to put some bite in this. So I strongly encourage to pass that, to put some bite in there because if we don't do it, i- it just continues. So we're going backwards. And I was at the meeting last year, it was decided and to do that. So I encourage it. I, I strongly do it.
I'm going to make a motion that we table it for one month. So we have a little bit more time to talk about it. So.
I'd, I'd really rather encourage you guys not to do that because this, this isn't the time of year to table an ordinance violation, uh, ordinance. Because right now, that means these guys aren't going to go write any ordinances for another month. And we're going to give everybody a month's leeway here. We need to keep writing ordinance. I don't care if you come back and change it later. But I, I would really encourage you not to do that. It, it takes a lot of.
How did the?
I'm really trying hard to get the town cleaned up.
I, I agree.
And I don't want you tying my hands from doing that.
Is, is two, where did the two fifty come from?
Statutorian, Indiana code.
It's a max.
Yes.
It's a maximum for an ordinance?
Yes.
Chief, I got a quick question. Let's say you cite somebody for something and they, do they actually get a period for compliance? Is it thirty days before you can cite them again for it or?
Usually they'll get a warning.
Yeah, we start with a warning and we usually go seven to ten days, uh, unless it's a parking infringement or something like that that we're looking for.
Sure. It's, it's, it's not like the, the lady you're talking about is going to get, going to get an ordinance violation.
We're going to have a huge sticker on the garbage can that's notifying you that, hey, it's in violation.
These are people that do it all the time.
Have those green, green sticker receipts in a repetitive nature, then it's time for us to take kind of some kind of step. Because you're just abusing the time that, that my department's putting in, um, um, to this, you know? When it comes to, you know, a lot of things, if, if it's, if it's going to be animal cruelty criminal, you know, we don't even, we don't even approach the city ordinances about, um, you know, stop signs and those kind of things. We write those all, um, to the circuit court.
Garrett, can I, can I ask you, um, does it need to be two hundred and fifty? Does it need to be that much? Because the judge can make it a thousand if he wants to, right? So, so what's, can we, can we make the minimum a little bit less?
So.
And still pay for the officer's time and stuff like that?
Ingrid, what is your office cost per hour?
Two hundred.
So it costs us two hundred dollars for her to show up over here to court for one case?
Well, you wouldn't have her show up for just one case, right? I mean.
I, I guess my question to, to you is what, what amount do you have that you think would be fair?
I don't know, Tim. I mean, I really don't. I just think that two hundred and fifty sounds pretty.
And it should be. It should hurt you in a wallet. Because if you've been told four or five times that you need to change this behavior, whatever it is, and you could finally get to court, it should cost you two hundred and fifty dollars because you've been given multiple chances to correct this before you ever end up in court. That, like I said, it's not like the old lady somewhere in town that puts her trash barrel out is going to get an ordinance violation right out of the gate.
Larry, you're turning the wheel every day, right? And, and so you and Garrett are dealing with this, okay?
And you're not.
I'm not. And that's why I'm asking these questions.
And that's why I'm telling you it needs to pass and it needs to be two hundred and fifty dollars.
I agree.
I, I'm sorry, I, I, like you said, I'm the guy turning the wheel on this. Duane's turned the wheel on it. He understands.
You think two fifty is fair?
Yes, I was part of that conversation. Cause you gotta get people's attention and it's just like we've been saying, they've had plenty of chances and if they haven't acted by then, you gotta make it perfect or it's not going to.
That's what you feel.
I, I do too. I've seen too many.
I'm going to make, I'm going to change my motion. I'm going to motion that we move forward with this ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion. I'll second. I have a second all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
It's really all about this correcting people's behavior.
Not really, not true. I've seen too much.
Right.
Who made that? Johnny? Okay, what, we had one more, two more?
Two more.
Two more.
Where is the sidebar?
Been working on it.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, so the next one, we'll do the fire territory. This is approving the lease with the fire territory and the redevelopment commission. Um, so that, uh, well, we were supposed to have a lease with the fire department and we never quite got there, but that's okay. Um, and so this is for grants, I believe, so they can pursue grants.
It's for the bond issuance.
Bond issue. Right Cindy? They have to show a relationship for that, a lawfully authorized relationship between the RDC and the fire territory since the fire territory uses the space.
Just FNI Kayla left because she has a sick child.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just texted her and asked her if she was coming back in for votes and she said that, yeah, she said she had a sick child.
Fair, keep your guns on the side.
Exactly.
Have you fellows read this lease?
I did. We just got it today.
Did you guys read the lease?
We understand that, yes.
Okay.
That was all presented from Tom Pittman.
This was the lease agreement. This is all part of the bond issuance for the fire territory, for the fire station expansion. And it's in agreement with the fire territory and the redevelopment commission. And this lease was part of the bond packet that was submitted and approved. So that's why Tom Pittman did it because it needed to be in the same format as what was submitted and approved for this bond issuance.
Everything looked to be in order to you guys?
What's, uh, there's a blank here where it says, uh, whereas the lesser has determined to issue the redevelopment district bonds in the aggregate principal amount of how much?
The leaser is the, is the fire protection. We're not buying the bonds. The fire protection territory is buying the bonds. This, all, all this is, is us showing that we leased the fire station to the fire territory.
For some reason, I thought the city had to get the bonds. I thought that was the only.
The city doesn't have enough, um, credit available because of the general obligation bond.
So they're getting the bonds. We're, we're just showing that we're leasing the fire station to them.
And you approve of the lease and the bond as a part of the fire territory?
Okay. But there's a dollar amount missing here. There's a blank.
Mike, do you remember what the total amount of the fire, of the bond is? I don't remember off the top of my head.
The whole amount is like eight hundred and fourteen or something like that.
Thank you.
That's a rough number. That's just.
So that, so that would be the aggregate principal amount?
Can you?
Correct. That is, okay. Okay, so that's eight hundred and, what was it again?
Fifteen dollars.
Eight hundred and fifteen?
Good job.
I mean, just blanks on, blanks on agreements just kind of concern me.
Keep a little, I assume you've had a chance to look over this as well?
I have.
Everything seem to be in order with you?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number.
Twenty twenty five, oh four one four C.
Oh four one four C.
You got it.
So you're going to sign, is he going to sign as the presiding officer then, and then I am going to sign as mayor? Is that how that should be?
I'm going to say yes.
I'll just trade.
I'll just sign mine here if you want me to. Or do you want me to?
Um, I don't know.
Is there a vote on that?
It's got place for Cindy to sign too.
Was there a vote on that?
I didn't see a vote yet.
There was a, a motion, a second. Was there a vote?
No, not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm still trying to figure out who's going to sign it.
Yeah, it really just says Cindy Mason.
President. Well, the, uh, yeah, the exhibit A is blank also. Is that, like, is that?
That's for notes, I think, basically.
It says restriction project.
Is that blank on purpose or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See where the council has to sign off on it.
Yeah, you won't type the lease, you're just saying.
And there's lease payment in date here as well.
The first two pages.
Yeah.
A lot of blanks.
The lease is just.
I thought this, I thought the thing was that it was required with the economic redevelopment commission was to be sign off on this, right?
This is.
Your name is on it. Your name is here to sign.
Then I assume being Mike would be the other one.
Yeah.
Part, part of the requirement is for the city to lease the fire station to the territory and that's why.
But ours is, is the bond.
Yes, yes. But this is a requirement of the bond. You're right. This is a part of the requirement.
So is the added redevelopment commission, the lesser.
Just kind of like the norm video. So Shilla test his and the.
This is literally for the leasing the fire station to the fire territory. So the ordinance is the city part of it.
So there's no place to sign on the city part of it?
Well, Larry has a place right in.
Not in the lease.
Do we still have to take a vote?
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I see it, man. Okay.
Restriction will start May first.
Duane, where, where are you seeing?
Not, not only just you and Nate.
Yeah, uh, you don't need to sign any place.
You're good.
Okay.
Even though you made the motion, Nate's the presiding officer.
Oh, okay, good.
So you're good to go. It's a little bit different than how my office does them. This is our version, which is okay.
That, that's where I was getting confused because you said, I need to sign. I'm like, okay. Got one more?
One more. Okay. We're getting there.
What?
Uh, EDC, where's your highlighting?
I don't know. I gave it to you and you said we didn't need that.
Are you both serving?
EDC.
What are you talking about? Yeah.
What's the last one?
Uh, ordinance author, establishing Department of Economic Development and authorizing related matters.
And this is a new department. It's not the redevelopment commission. This is a new board or department. It's my understanding that it had to be created.
Had recreated in order to do any development, didn't it? Yeah, there, you know?
Yeah. We need more boards. So, so right now we don't know who all the members are going to be.
So this, I could say this much more than FYI than anything.
So we need a council member to replace Mr. Voorhees.
No.
You don't?
No, this, this is different. This is, this is a new board.
Okay.
For what?
Oh, for the, that's right. This is for the.
Economic development. This isn't the redevelopment committee. That's what's said gets in the weeds here. Is the redevelopment committee, uh, we do need to replace Mr. Voorhees on that because that was a council appointment. And then I have to replace Brian Kraft because that was my or Duane's appointment. So, and I've not yet done that. Uh, I was kind of waiting till the, the council got back together here with, with Mr. Pointer and everybody was here.
So, so this, this new entity that we're creating, Larry, is for these five, five subpoints? Is that right?
It's my understanding, yes. And, and I, I, I think a lot of these things really don't pertain to anything.
This is extremely vague.
Yes, it is.
I mean.
But it's per Indiana code. We have to have it in order to make all the wheels turn with the, the grants and bonds.
Hang on.
Uh, somebody asked me earlier today and I, uh, honestly, I, I don't see this board really doing a whole lot.
You got regulations you got to follow anyways.
Yeah. Yeah.
Regardless, we got to be compliant.
So, yeah, and, and this gets us in compliance by at least naming this board.
Although we don't know what it does.
Well.
Well, there's.
There's bullet points that says we know what it does, but.
They are a little general, but I think, I think they'll. There's one, you gotta go by.
Creating or retaining opportunities for gainful employment. Okay. Creating business opportunities. Providing reliable water services. And I assume what they're talking about is to areas that are currently not served or underserved. Cause we, we have reliable water services in the city already. The abatement reduction or prevention of pollution. And the removal of substances and materials being processed that otherwise would cause pollution when used. I don't know what that means either.
I don't understand that at all. And Ms. Barks, what is this ordinance? Can you kind of explain it a little bit?
Hang on, I'm looking. We're getting there. Tom sent out a schedule and I'm trying to figure out what that schedule is.
This is all over the place you got remediation you got.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a shotgun.
Water slide. To me, five, four and five, you, you got EPA stuff that's going to follow. I mean, you've got guidelines you got to follow. I mean, it's just like.
Right.
I mean, you can't just throw everything out there. I mean, there's rules that if a facility should have to follow, if they're not following, then they'll get, they'll get their own.
You're absolutely right. It's a state meeting. I mean, we really, we, it's kind of a technicality and then it's proven it because if the state requires it, then.
That's right. You got.
Indiana code says we have to have it, but like, and I, it's like I told somebody earlier, I, I really don't see this board having a lot of things to do.
Right.
Because there's so much overlap with what you guys do, what redevelopment does, Board of Works does. I mean, there's already.
But it says here, actually in section three, if you read it, it says here, any officer of the city is. "Any officer of the city is hereby authorized and directed for and on behalf of the city to execute and deliver any instrument or take any other action as such officer determines to be necessary or desirable to accomplish the purposes of this vague ordinance." Okay, I mean, this is actually a state mandate? Are you kidding me?
Oh, politics, not, being vague. Yeah, welcome to politics, Johnny. Never heard of this before.
It seems like we need to pass it just because of, I mean.
Well, I completely disagree. I don't think, I don't think we need to pass it, because I don't understand it.
I think if we don't, it's a state mandate, I mean.
This is, this is part of the bond issuance.
We're gonna put this bond issue in jeopardy, yeah.
Four and five, there, I mean, those, those are already set in stone. You can't, and then like you say, Larry, the other three, you broke down what we needed to know about them.
But, but if you read this right here, it says that any officer, without talking to anybody else, okay, can make decisions as they see fit. That's what it says. Now, is that truly a state mandate?
I'm assuming that our legal, he must look this up, I mean.
Where's this timeline? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, the email from, the email from.
I, 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 I'm gonna motion that we, we table this, because we don't know.
It cannot be tabled. It cannot be tabled.
Because we're gonna put this bond in jeopardy if we don't.
The bond has to be closed on by May first. The email from Tom Pittman, who is the attorney that's representing the Fire Territory for the bond issuance, it says that he's not able to attend the meeting. Here is the attached resolution that needs to be passed. Please remember to hold a public hearing prior to the passage. Cindy, please confirm to me that the seller of the parcels is willing to pay, blah, 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 blah. But, um, this, this has to do with, hmm?
No, thank you, perfect. Um, I would say worst case scenario, we can get here. Better guidance from Tom Pittman if he calls.
Or have a special meeting, yeah.
But this paper is strictly just in case you get bonded over the bond, if I'm not mistaken.
And when you get bonded.
But that's not what this says. That's not what this says.
I understand that's not what it says, but that's not how the state works. This is how the state works.
Okay.
You know, to get the bond approved, you have to be complying with what the state wants. This is what the state wants in case you get bonded.
It also says here, though, Mike, it says here about, uh, this is wide ranging. This is a reliable, reliable.
It's because the state doesn't really care about it. It's just something they put in place, 'cause some politician wanted it in place, so that's why they did it. It's never really gonna be looked at, ever. It's just a technicality that you have to have in order to get the bond.
Okay, I would be willing to move forward with this if we strike section three.
I don't think.
You can't strike anything.
Strike anything about.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to pass ordinance two thousand twenty-five zero four one four D. We are in D, right?
Yes.
Okay. If it's, it's, if it's a compliance issue, we, it is what it is. Like it, hate it, love it.
The motion, you have a second. Have motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Johnny, did you vote?
Uh, no, I'm just not voting in favor of it right now.
Okay, that's fine. Three, one.
Yep.
Passed.
So, Ms. Parks, can I ask a question on this?
Yeah.
Okay, is this document as drawn, is this, uh, is section three necessary based on the, the, the state ordinance?
Yes, based on state statute. That's straight out of state statute. And I'm not changing what Tom Pittman drafted, to be quite honest with you. Even if we wanted to strike it, he knows way more about this than I do, and I'll be the first one to admit that, and I'm not gonna strike it.
Okay, so, so then Tom Pittman drafted this, and, and, but you've looked at the state statute and you've seen the state, state statute, and the state statute reads, and it has section three in it.
Not verbatim, but yes, that's in the state statute.
Okay, so it's not?
It's in the state statute, it's just not verbatim in the ordinance. I'm not changing what Tom Pittman does, nor am I going to authorize modifying anything that he presents here.
We've, we've passed the ordinance, we can talk about it later if we want to. We need to move on. Anybody else have anything on, you have any more ordinance?
Nope, I'm all out.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming city cleanup days, uh, update. Originally, I looked at, uh, at the last month's meeting. Uh, we talked about attentive date of the eighteenth and nineteenth, and, uh, it was brought to my attention, the city boys are off work for Good Friday. So that was out. Uh, talked to the powers that be, we were able to move the trash cans out to the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That'll be at the sewage plant area. Uh, I've been in contact finally with W Enterprises, and they will have dumpsters there for electronics and scrap metal. Uh, that is at a additional cost to the city, but, uh, the, the scrap metal, hopefully there'll be enough of it to help offset some of the costs of both of those dumpsters being delivered for that weekend. Uh, we will have city employees down there to, uh, help direct people as to what dumpsters things go in. Uh, we will have people there to check water bills and, uh, make sure that the trash is coming in, is coming in from the city as best possible. I've got about ten applications in, uh, from residents for the football team to come by and pick up items, uh, that were larger, that, uh, they couldn't get moved themselves. Uh, we have urged everybody to utilize their dumpsters at home, their totes, to put small items and, and bag trash in, and not, uh, not utilize this service just for bag trash. Comments, questions, and then.
I think the big thing that I had on that, Larry, was, uh, the, uh, electronic items. I think that I saw in, uh, that you were able to secure that?
Yep.
Okay, then I think that's a big, because people can bring their monitors and all that.
That was an additional cost to the city, but, you know, in the past, when we had a, a, a curbside pickup, you drive around town and you see a dozen big screen TVs sitting out along the curb that never got picked up, and then the city guys had to go pick them up, and then we had to figure out what to do with them anyway. So.
So I think that's a big deal, you got that negotiated. I think that's good for the community to have.
And, and I'm hoping that the, the scrap metal in that dumpster will help offset the cost of the other dumpster. So, well, that remains to be seen.
Like, uh, appliances and things, that falls into.
Scrap metal.
It also doesn't have freon.
Freon, all the freon has to be taken out.
And it has to have a, a tag on it from a company that took the freon out. You can't just cut the hose and let the, the freon out, say, well, it doesn't have any freon in it. There's a list of rules available to pick up here at the, at the clerk's office.
Is there any one, I guess, just for citizens, 'cause I, like, for example, I don't know. Is there anybody around here that can certify that kind of stuff, that we can suggest?
It would have to be an appliance.
Like Downs Appliance.
Downs or something like that.
I would guess they could.
Yeah.
Somebody like Lidscomb's good too, they, they do.
Have to be, have to be certified as freon.
I guess, for example, if anybody's curious.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Brian BT Reynolds, any of those guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, there you go.
Yeah. Uh, just, uh, to reiterate, Fire Department renovation begins May first. Completion target is December thirty-first. Uh, all costs are covered by grants and existing Fire Territory funds. So that's not coming out of any of the city coffers per se. We had the, the discussion that we tabled from last month regarding the speed limit change, or, uh, what we wanna do on South Brady Street Boulevard area due to parked cars and children. I know the police department will now tag some, uh, vehicles over the last month, parked in the grass out in that area, uh, in the boulevard, I'll call it, on the grassy area there between the two streets. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any more thoughts on that? I know John and I talked about that.
Larry, you and I talked, and, uh, one of the things that we thought, and didn't get a chance to talk together about it, but, um, maybe a lot of those people that are violating that speed limit out there are coming out of the school. And I thought maybe that might be a great opportunity for, uh, Ms. Wood and Ms. Hiller to reach out to the resource officer and possibly the, uh, Attica High School to, uh, let them know that, um, the city is receiving some complaints on speeding, and, uh, maybe they could get an announcement over, uh, the intercom, uh, to address that possibly.
So we generally worked on speed enforcement in the area over the past month. Uh, we issued zero citations in the area. Um, and I think a lot of it goes back to thirty mile an hour down Brady Street. Looks like you're done fifty.
Yeah.
You got close cars in close proximity, you got curves in close proximity, but on radar done.
Yeah.
We issued zero citations.
Yeah. So Larry and I talked also about the fact that, you know, if there's any kind of action items we can have for the community, and, uh, you know, and clearly, Gary, you're right, it just looks like they're moving a lot faster than what they are. But, you know, Larry and I talked, if we could use the junior council to get the word out at the high school, um, to see if we could kind of head it off there, and then we also talked about the possibility of going through, uh, City Hall here, where if there was a lot of complaints, uh, to go and, and pull the addresses and, and have a direct mail to those people, possibly. Um, now I know that there's a whole nother effort for that, but, um, and we talked about it. And I know, Larry, you've had different levels of success on that, Dwayne, probably as well, but, you know, it's, uh, it's just not easy, I think, coming up with a solution.
So hopefully if we can get the word out, out there to the students that, hey, you know, thirty miles an hour may be even too fast going down some of these side streets, and, uh, warn them that the police will be looking at enforcement if, if need be, and maybe let Kyle know as well, so he can, uh, he can pass the word out there.
Um, either I or Jocelyn can make an announcement. Jocelyn does the announcements morning and afternoon, but there's sometimes I add announcements as well, so.
Let me tell them you're talking today.
I, I, I did get a complaint from one of the neighbors out there in the, is it morning side drive area? Yeah. The back, uh, uh, apparently that there's, there's been a lot of speeding cars going down that road. And, uh, they, they thought that the city had given permission for that. And I said, well, I don't know that we can say yea or nay, it's a city street, but with that being said, that may be on the list too, to, to be careful back there.
So maybe you guys could get together and figure out, you know, what, what you wanna say to the population there?
Yeah. 'Cause I know, uh, when I like ride with, like, some friends, I see students acting stupid all the time in their big old country trucks and stuff, so.
Big old country trucks.
Well, that might be our guy.
We never did that.
Well, try to solve this the lowest, lowest, uh, way possible. Dancing in the streets, street closure, fireworks approval. Cindy, did you have anything to add on that? I still had it on that.
I'm waiting, uh, to talk with Eric, 'cause he was trying to see when they would actually be doing the construction down there on the, the benches and the planters. If that would be done by the energy.
I just sent that, uh, contract out today for the planters, uh, and I don't have a timeline on the back from them yet. Circling back a little bit, I talked to Cindy, since Cindy's talking, uh, talked to her the other day about shredded, and we don't plan on doing that during the, the city pickup, or not pickup, but cleanup day. Uh, but you're gonna schedule that for May? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's coming up. Anybody need to know anything about that?
And we'll probably would like to have that downtown, maybe in the parking lot area.
I think that'd be excellent.
I mean, it'll be visible and, you know, drive-through and, and whatever, so.
That would be a good spot.
Yeah, and I was, I was encouraging, uh, Lexi to do the farmer's market down that same area this year as well. Along this, uh, on, on forward to new business, uh, Duke Energy got ahold of me yesterday, and, uh, they've offered, uh, uh, three thousand dollars in funding for two more of the speed signs, like we put on Perry Street and out on Sycamore. And, uh, talked to the chief about logical locations for those, and, uh, we, we both agreed that probably near the parks, uh, Main Street up here by McDonald Park gets a lot of high-speed traffic by there, a lot of kids up there playing, and, and essentially no fence up there to keep them on the property, so, uh, try to locate one up there, and then one up on Summit Street near the soccer field.
I was gonna suggest Summit Street up when you're coming into Atticus, so that way they're slowed down before they get to the soccer field.
Yes.
Most people come in about forty miles an hour.
At least coming, probably they're at the top of the hill.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Riley's.
Yeah, shame we couldn't put one there on the highway heading into town. That's, uh, Highway Department, isn't it?
Yeah, and then I was gonna talk to Eric. I noticed the one out here at All Stop's isn't working, hasn't been working for quite a while. And I personally stopped and reset it several times, and it worked for a few days and then quit. And I think we're probably paying a light bill for that one, 'cause it's got a meter there, and there's no need to pay a minimum on that if that's not gonna work. And I, and I don't see putting a lot of money into that one, because, uh, we could probably replace that in kind with one of these new solar ones and not have to pay a light bill, so.
Yeah. We'd probably see one somewhere closer to the, like Summit Street almost, and they come flying down there on forty-one coming in. But I know, I know that's not our jurisdiction, it's the Highway Department. Who knows that?
Summit Street.
Not Summit, uh, Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was gonna say that too, 'cause that's really a speed trap.
Oh, good lord.
In fact, I remember when a former mayor got a speeding ticket coming into.
I saw a plane of angels fly over there today.
Oh, they just got revved by my.
And, you know, there's, there's probably a half dozen other places that, that would be good candidates. I thought another, you know, another one on Perry Street down closer to the library area, maybe a little, you know, 'cause they, they fly out through there, uh, going to the Badlands.
I like your idea about replacing that one there at All Stop's.
Yeah.
You gotta worry.
Yeah, so there's, there's several places there that we could do that, but, you know, there's, there's so much funding to go around for, for those, so. But if they're willing to give us money every year for, for that, why, you know, a few years, maybe we can get them all, all in, changed over.
I think you've done great with the ones we got.
Yeah, it seemed to work, believe it or not.
I still like having the one that, from when the school was there, 'cause it reminds me, I mean, I like.
Yeah, and it still works, so. Anything else? Next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, May twelfth, six P M. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Jimmy, why don't you do the honors? I'm not first. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
You have that motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Who seconded?
Dwayne?
Morgan, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, Morgan.
Thank you, Morgan.